Welcome to the League of Women Voters of El Dorado County Candidates Forum. My name is Elizabeth Leslie and tonight I will be moderating this forum for Placerville City Council. Thank you to the many candidates that have decided to join us tonight and inform voters about where they stand on the issues. The candidates running for city council are Tracy Bunch, Jackie No, Mandy Rodriguez, Michael Saragosa, and Jackie Yapes. Thank you again for being here. Let's go over the rules. So for tonight's forum, we have our timer here, Andrew Muse Fisher. He is going to remind you with visual cues about when you need to wrap up your speaking. The timing goes like this. You have two minutes for your opening statements, one and a half minutes to respond to the questions, and one minute for your closing statements. The order that we will go in is alphabetical by last name. Then we will go on to the next candidate for each question. Just as a reminder, that candidates will not refer to other candidates or their qualifications. Also, if you go over time, we will meet you, and also if you continue to violate the rules, we will remove you from the forum. A little bit more information about voting in California. Every registered voter in the state of California will receive a vote by mail ballot in the mail. Postage is not required to return that ballot. Also, if you have not yet registered, there's still time. You can go online to registeredtovote.ca.gov and register there. Also, as long as your ballot is postmarked by November 3rd, it has 17 days to arrive to be counted. If you have additional questions about where to vote, how to vote, or your voter registration record, contact the El Dorado County Elections Office. They can be reached at (530) 621-7480. You can also drop your ballot off to the Elections Office or a vote center. For more information about what is on your ballot and more information about these candidates, please visit our online nonpartisan voter guide, votersedge.org. Again, thank you for being here. Let's get started. So we will begin with opening statements. The first opening statement will come from Tracy Bunch. Take it away, Tracy.
All right. How's everybody doing? I'm glad to be here. I've been a resident of Placerville for like the last 15 years. By way of Mississippi, Bossburg, it's a rural area, small town, everybody knows each other, got a lot of history from the south and things like that, which kind of reminds me of Placerville. Moved to Placerville and I became a childcare worker, a coach. I worked in the community a lot, so I know a lot of people. And I've always been a volunteer in different services for the children and the youth and their families. And so by doing that, I've been able to cultivate a lot of kids at a bad time or a lot of families that always kind of looked up to me and things like that, because I was one of those kids that came from nothing. And I try to make sure that I hold values that my grandparents put around me. I'm a Christian. I'm also a father of five. I'm also a husband of 20 years. So my kids are at school in Placerville. One goes to Sierra. Well, take that back. I have three kids that were born here. My first daughter was actually born in Mississippi. So I do have three kids. Bianca, she goes to Markham. Frankie, she goes to Sierra, and also Tracy Jr. So you know, by doing things like that, I was able to make sure that I meet the families, like more like police officers. I've been working around for a couple of years. Hey, do you mind if I get a do-over? A do-over? Pause.
I think we need to continue at this point?
Yeah, one second. All right. Technical difficulties, sorry. And so working with the police officers and things like that, I've been able to put some of the police officers in situations of getting personable with the children that I work with, personable with the families. And that's always, it's like safe communities where we put people together like that. So yeah, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will hear opening remarks from Jackie No.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank the League for having us. I'm gonna start by telling you a little bit about myself. My husband and I are 21-year residents of Placerville. I've served on the Recreation and Park Commission for nine years. I've served on the Board of Friends of El Dorado Trail for 10 years. You might recognize me from the trail, carrying the trash bags, my chainsaw, doing my girl thing. I have served on many committees on the Transportation Commission, the county, the city, for master plans and projects that have gone on. I received Citizen of the Year Award from the Placerville Police Department in 2018. I volunteered for a lot of events like May is Bike Month, Walk to School Day, Rise and Shine, National Night Out, which is next Tuesday, by the way, and the Christmas tree's on Highway 50. My top three priorities are a safe community, safe from wildfires, safe from public health issues, safe from crime. Another issue of mine is rebuilding our streets. I worked on the Measure L to get that passed, and I'm pretty proud of the work that's been happening so far on that and look forward to overseeing that continue. And lastly, I would like to build a positive business climate so that we attract more businesses to Placerville. We've lost a lot over the years. We need to bring them back. We need to help the existing businesses prosper and grow, and that will help us all. I would like to respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Now we'll hear opening remarks from Mandy Rodriguez.
I think you might be muted.
Let's try that again. It's not my first time, but you know, it's my first time tonight. So my name is Mandy Rodriguez, and I have lived in El Dorado County for the last 25 years, working in the hospitality and ski industry. In November of 2017, I hung up my snow skis and moved from Lake Tahoe to the city of Placerville. I am the owner of High Altitude Management and of Soul Bunny Silver Smith. My studio was located on Main Street for about three years. And when I purchased my house, I moved my studio here, so that's what you see behind me. I served as a board member, treasurer of the Placerville Downtown Association during my time on the PDA. I gained firsthand knowledge about the specific issues that affected our historic town. I believe I have ideas to improve our town while preserving all parts of our unique history. The primary issues of my campaign will be preserving our history, addressing our failing roads, raising utility costs, homelessness, and most importantly, uniting our community. I believe small businesses are the backbone of our community, and I will do my best to support them in every way, especially during these challenging times. The city of Placerville was love at first sight for me, and I'm passionate for this town. I am so blessed to be able to walk Main Street on a daily basis. Every day is an opportunity to see friends and make new ones on my daily walks and bike rides. Placerville is truly a gem. As your Placerville City Council member, I will fight to preserve it. Election Day is November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Next, we'll hear opening remarks from Michael Saragosa.
Well, good evening, and again, thank you, League of Women Voters, for holding this forum tonight. I know it was, weren't sure you were gonna be able to do it, and we thank you for being able to put this together tonight. So first, I want to say I love Placerville. When I first came to town 15 years ago, we drove through town and I immediately fell in love with it. Two weeks later, we were back and we purchased a home. One of the historic houses is in town owned by the Skinner family way back when, one of the first wineries in El Dorado County, and we love the house. It's a 131-year-old house that needs constant TLC, but it's something worth preserving, and I feel the same way about our city. It needs that preservation and at the same time as we build towards a future here in Placerville. I've had the honor to serve on city council for the last two years, this year as mayor, although I didn't think 2020 would be the 2020 that we're experiencing today. But it's been a great honor for me to serve in this role for the past two years. Prior to that, I served on the Placerville Planning Commission, and then prior to that, on the Placerville Historic Advisory Commission. I've worked most of my life in government, and then from that I left to become a small business owner. My wife and I run our own public affairs firm, and we've done that for the past 10 years. And we've been blessed to be able to do that and be able to work together. It's something that I hope a lot of families might be able to do as well. My top priority is really recovering from the shutdown, continuing to improve our roads and our streets through use of our Measure H and L funds, and fight our fires, potentially fighting the fires, as well as that's my last thing I was gonna say here, as well as making sure we don't spend more than we can afford. So want to thank you this evening and look forward to the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next opening remarks are from Jackie Yapes. Don't forget to unmute yourself, Jackie.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Yapes, and I'm a third-generation Californian and a Placerville resident. I love our historic small town in El Dorado County. I grew up in both Placerville and Sacramento. I attended Gold Trail Elementary and Ponderosa High School. I have a bachelor's degree in political science from UC Davis and a master's degree in public administration and policy from the University of Southern California. While in college, I served as a White House intern for the Office of the First Lady in DC. I'm also a local businesswoman, Realtor coach, and a retired state of California manager. As a former state employee, I was in the field of information technology, project management, legislative analysis, and public relations. I don't believe in raising taxes at this time, and I want to see the city get past the COVID-19 health crisis and be successful now and into the future. I know what the problems of the city are, and I would take my role as a city councilperson very seriously in tackling the current problems that our city faces. Some of those problems include road repairs, the homeless issue, PG&E power outages, developing a current fire safety plan, attracting new businesses and keeping current local businesses, dealing with traffic from Apple Hill and Tahoe, high water rates, monitoring the city's finances and budget by building a healthier reserve and not overspending, and preparing for a potential second COVID wave this fall. If elected to the city council, I use my work and educational background to better serve the people and constituents of Placerville, also to ensure our city is safe and clean while preserving its historical value for our city residents and voters. I support small businesses, large businesses, children's education, city parks, local courts, police, the medical community, and emergency responders. I will also be donating my first six months of city council salary to a downtown Placerville cause or organization, such as the holiday tree lighting ceremony. I would like to close by saying I am the only person running for city council that grew up in Placerville. Thank you for your consideration and vote.
Thank you, Jackie. I appreciated all the candidates' opening remarks. Now we're going to move on to questions, and as a reminder, by members of the public, we will get through as many as we can. And again, keep in mind there is a timekeeper. Andrew will let you know when you are getting close to your time at the 15-second mark, and the red card means you must stop. Okay, the first question is going to go to Tracy Bunch. Are you ready? Here we go. Please share with us how you've been involved with the city and what you've already accomplished that prepares you specifically for the selected office.
Again, I'm a man of many hats. And I feel like I'm the candidate that has a lot of substance when it comes to working with the people. And so working with the people, like I say, working and putting games together for the police force, also working with different volunteer groups that work with the children, and through education, and working with different agencies and different vendors and fundraising. I've been that person that became, I want to say the people's champ. Just be honest with you. I really enjoy being around the people. And one thing that people know about me is that I have a great conversation, because I always say I come from that rural area. My grandfather always taught me, like, you know, I mean, community is everything. I'm always accountable about everything I say and I do. I walk the walk, I talk the talk. And so when it comes down to back the badge, it comes down to any local protest and things like this and that, I'll have a word of making sure that people stay safe, people understand the rules and regulations and what goes on. So pretty much anything that comes involved in the city of Placerville over the last 15 years, I've always been involved in like the cleanup, I've always been involved in city parks and rec. I've also been involved with different high schools, making sure that I cultivate and, you know, make sure, put the values in athletes and things like that. So from me to you, when it comes to substance and it comes to working in the community, there's no better candidate, and I think all the other candidates understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And I'll repeat the question one more time. The next person to answer the question will be Jackie No. Please share with us how you've been involved with the city and what you've already accomplished that prepares you specifically for the selected office.
Things that I've been involved in in the city is I have worked to improve communication between the city and the residents. I helped establish the automatic emails that everyone can sign up for to get the agendas. I was a critical part in getting the information that goes out in the water bills to improve that communication. I have served on citizen committees for hiring employees. As I've said, I served on the Park and Rec Commission and many committees for our master plans, our walkable communities, our Rise and Shine Community Days. I worked with both the city and the police and park department to develop the trail enhancement plan, which brought public safety and outreach to our trail when it was having some troubled times. And I've just done a lot with the city, and I really enjoy working there, which is the reason, part of the reason I'm running. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie. Now, Mandy Rodriguez, can you please answer the question, and please let me know if you'd like me to repeat it?
Okay, I can answer it. During my time as a business owner on Main Street, I was involved with the Placerville Downtown Association. First, I was on the board, and then I actually was the treasurer for a while under the president, Dennis Thomas. And during that time, I helped out with all the events, be it the antique show up at like 4:00 in the morning. Also, another event that I really cared about was the Girls Night Out, so I was very heavily involved in that. The Christmas organization of the, not the parade, but just what we were doing downtown on Main Street, Halloween. So I have, you know, a good feel of things that are the events that go on here in Placerville. And some of the things that I feel qualified me is when I lived in, I used to live up in Tahoe. Specifically, I also lived in Kirkwood, and I worked as a community manager. I was a certified community manager for a homeowners association, and I managed a 64-unit condo complex, and we had 64 amazing families that would come up. And when you manage a building like that, you learn to be a firefighter, a psychologist, a plumber, an electrician, and you really learn how to run a small community. So that's my experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Michael Saragosa, please answer the question.
Thank you. So I've been serving on city council for the last two years. I've also had the opportunity to serve on the El Dorado Transportation Commission as well as part of the Two by Two Committee, which is two council members from the city of Placerville and two Board of Supervisor members, where we meet to discuss issues that affect both the city as well as the county. In addition to that, as I mentioned before, I served on the Historical Advisory Commission for the city. We've actually, at the end of that, we recommended that we form a historic district in the downtown area. It's been a long time coming, but I still support that idea. I served on the Placerville City Council, or excuse me, on the Placerville Planning Commission, and then again, as mayor this year. And prior to that, I've worked for three different legislators as chief of staff, and then worked for Governor, then Governor Schwarzenegger in his office, Chief Deputy Appointment Secretary, Deputy Cabinet Secretary, Director of the Employment Training Panel, and then I was Undersecretary at State and Consumer Services Agency. That was 17 departments, about 17,000 employees, and we oversaw a budget of about $8 billion. So that's my background in terms of experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And to answer the question next, Jackie Yapes. And please again, let me know if I can repeat the question.
Jackie, you might be muted.
Let's try that again. I'm gonna go ahead and read the question again. It looks like maybe she needed to log in again. So the question was, please share with us how you've been involved with the city and what you've already accomplished that prepares you specifically for the selected office.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I don't know where my video went.
Well, that's okay. We can still hear you very clearly.
Okay, there I am. Okay, I'm fairly new to being back into Placerville area, but I've been reaching out to the Sheriff's Department and also to the Police Department to get a feel for the home issue and to discuss that with them and to figure out maybe a strategy for that. I've also been participating in the city council meetings. I've also reached out to the department heads. I talked to Dave Warren, the Finance Director, the other day, and I got the city budget. I've been reviewing that so that I understand the situation of our budget for our city. I've also talked to Woody at the El Dorado County Transportation Commission to go over the four proposals or alternatives. So just kind of getting the lay of the land, what is going on with our city and what needs to be done. But I also have a background in political science. I worked for the state of California for 20 years as an IT project manager on billion-dollar projects to make sure they came on on time and on budget. So with my background and my education, I think I can resolve whatever issues or problems come our way. So thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. And we'll move on to our next question. And the person to answer this question first will be Jackie No. The question is, what kind of growth do you think is appropriate for Placerville in order to maintain its rural and historic character and not overwhelm our city streets?
Well, the great thing about the city of Placerville is we have a limited geography. There's not a whole lot of room for a lot of growth. I am definitely not a no-growth-er. I think that we need a sensible, smart amount of growth. I think we really need to focus on bringing our businesses back to Placerville. And when we bring those businesses back to Placerville, we're gonna need to bring those people who run those businesses. So that's really what I'm looking at in terms of growth. I think we need to look at our affordable housing. The city is actually has two projects moving forward for all of our workers. I'm excited about that. And thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Next, Mandy Rodriguez, can you please answer the question?
Yes, I believe in slow, well-planned growth. I think we need to really pay attention to the infrastructure of our roads. I feel like a lot of times, especially right now, there's all this building going on, but we're not really paying attention to the traffic that it's causing. So that's, I think, a huge concern with people. I also believe in mid-to-small-size businesses, cottage businesses, mom-and-pop-style businesses. So those are the things that keep Placerville unique and keep us small and kind of keep us on that historic pathway.
Thank you, Mandy. Michael, can you please answer the question?
Yes. I mean, we are, as Ms. No mentioned, we have about six miles of area that we can actually grow, so it's not a lot of area for us to add huge amounts of new track homes into Placerville. But I do think that there is some opportunity for growth along Placerville Drive as well as on Broadway. We really have to reimagine some of those in terms of what we can do to reinvigorate those two corridors that we have in town. So whether that's mixed use, so that we can have people that live and work in the same area and be able to walk, just like we do on Main Street where we have some lofts up in those areas as well. I think those are all things that can be blended into the character of the town and be able to contribute and let people live here and work here. I mean, one of the things that we've seen is really an outflux of people into other areas, because there isn't a job opportunities here. So we want to be able to incubate those here and really have, give people the opportunity to come and live and work in Placerville. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I'm gonna repeat the question one more time. And Jackie Yapes, it's your turn to answer the question about what kind of growth do you think is appropriate for Placerville in order to maintain its rural and historic character and not overwhelm our city streets?
I grew up here in Placerville, and there was hardly anything around. There was nothing on Missouri Flats. So as a Realtor and a businesswoman, I'm for smart growth for Placerville. I want to retain that rural country feel though to our city. I think with the El Dorado County Transportation Commission, they're proposing four alternatives for our freeway. And I think the voters really need to look at that, because the congestion, we need to deal with that. I also believe in extending our city district to include Missouri Flats so that the city of Placerville can share in some of that revenue generated by this corridor. I'd like to see new businesses brought to Placerville area, but again, smart growth while preserving our rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Tracy, can you answer the question? I'm gonna repeat it again by request here. What kind of growth do you think is appropriate for Placerville in order to maintain its rural and historic character and not overwhelm the city streets?
The first thing I was gonna say, just listening to, you know, the people. The leadership needs to be more approachable in person as the people talk, you know, because I had a lot of different conversations. And so from me to you, it should be a sit-down with like a town forum to really hear what the people want, because everybody keeps like telling these answers and saying this and that, but they're like giving to people, but they're not listening to the people. And so I look at a conservative way of living, like when it comes down to the COVID-19 hit, and I feel like we need to focus on the population that we do have and the things that we do need to be maintaining, the things like that, and give the public a chance to say what they want, not what we're gonna give them. And so that's my philosophy, listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. So this next question will begin with Mandy Rodriguez. And this question is, sort of has two parts. It is about both housing and homelessness. Do you believe that the city has an affordable housing problem in terms of supply and cost, and what is your solution? And also, how will you address the issues regarding the homeless camp along Broadway, regarding fire danger and sanitation facilities and litter? So what are your, what are your plans for both affordable housing and for dealing with the unhoused in Placerville? Mandy, you're muted. Let's try that again.
I think we do need to really have a serious discussion on affordable housing. A lot of times when we hear affordable housing, it ends up being just low-income housing. So somebody who makes a medium income that's really not on any services doesn't really qualify to get into that housing. And then they find themselves in very high-priced housing, so it is an issue. And it's something we really need to discuss further. As far as the homelessness issue up on Upper Broadway, we really need to deal with it and call it what it is, which is a mostly drug and mental illness problem. And once we come to terms with what it really is, then we can come, then we can come to find ways to address it properly. Just putting homeless people in homes isn't the answer. And yes, it is a concern. The fire issue is not only a concern up on Broadway, it's all over. There are people living in woods all around us, so it's, it is an issue, and it's gonna have to be dealt with. And I don't know if the city has the funds to properly deal with it, and I think that we need to turn to the county and the state. So thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Michael Saragosa, your turn to answer about how to deal with the city's affordable housing issues and how to deal with the city's unhoused and the homeless problem on Broadway.
Absolutely. Thank you. So city council, we have just approved two projects. It'll be roughly 150 units in two different projects that will be affordable housing. And so we're excited about that. It's actually the first two projects in about 25 years when it comes to affordable housing in the city of Placerville, but we can still do more. As I mentioned, I think there's opportunities on both of our, in both Placerville Drive as well as Broadway to do some work-live arrangements as well. In terms of the homeless, it is a citywide project, as Mandy said. It's not just Broadway, but it's certainly the worst part is on Broadway. You know, one thing that we all have to deal with, and it's not just Placerville, this is the entire state, is we're under the Ninth Circuit Court ruling that says that unless we have beds to put people in, we can't move people out of these areas. And so the Supreme Court refused to hear the case. And so the Supreme Court refused to hear the case. And so all of the states and cities are dealing with that issue and how we deal with it. I support Sheriff DiAgostini's approach, which is a navigation center that is more of a locked-type facility for people that want to actually deal with their mental health and alcohol and drug abuse problems so that our other funds that we may have through county and city and state can be used for people that are just in between jobs or other things. But everybody else would have to go into more of this supervised facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jackie Yapez, can you please answer the question about both affordable housing in Placerville and the unhoused specifically on Broadway?
Yes, I support the affordable housing and the two projects that the city council has approved. I think we have some affordable housing up towards the Cottonwood subdivision area. However, with affordable housing, I think we also need to take in consideration seniors in our community and provide that for them. In terms of the homeless, I see the homeless people, the population, every day when I walk on the El Dorado Trail in town, and they're not going away. And El Dorado County doesn't have a game plan. County does have discussions going on by various groups and organizations, but nothing's concrete, nothing's in writing. I believe we need to establish a committee or task force and hire a consulting firm such as Homebase for fast-tracking this issue. Task force needs to develop a strategic plan for homeless population so that locals can enjoy the trails and restaurants and businesses in town and be safe. I've been researching and studying how other cities currently are dealing with the homeless population. Perhaps we can use another city's successful model in developing our strategic homeless plan for Placerville. I do support Sheriff DiAgostini's idea of navigation centers as a possible short-term solution to get people back on their feet. I also know that Sacramento recently just opened up the Meadowview Navigation Center with a sprung shelter concept for the homeless. So I know this is a big issue for Placerville. We need to address it. I don't want it to be where we offer free housing for them and we get all these people that come to our city, but we need to address it and resolve it or have a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Tracy, your turn to answer the question about affordable housing and homelessness.
Well, you know, it all starts off inspiration. And I think one of the things that we, we sit back and we really forget about is that it's all about the leadership and like having people to volunteer and participate and helping each other. We always talk about the homeless like they're not people. You know, you can always approach people and talk to them about what do they need. Again, we're always telling people what they, what they need, but we never listen. And so with me, myself, and I, I sit back and since I've worked with all the services in Placerville, I will put something together, the Blue Ribbon Committee. Jackie spoke real good about that, I must say, when it comes down to bringing the experts in, having the conversation, taking the data. I know it's a kind of hard thing to come up with sometimes, but you come up with a better solution when you take your time and you have the right people to do the job. Affordable housing, I was a kid that grew up in the projects and things like that. And my mom used that to her advantage to become the woman she is today and also to groom me to become the man I am today. And so instead of making that a permanent place, we have to give incentives for people to, you know, maybe come up with down payments for a home, to learn how to buy a home, learn how to live, and so we can kind of keep moving that cycle forward. But again, as picking volunteers that are willing to do the job and go in and have a conversation with the homeless. Because it's not just mentally ill, it could also be economics. People have a hard time. So we need to make sure that everybody's human and we need to stop the body. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie No, your turn to answer the question.
Great, thank you. As far as affordable housing goes, I think I mentioned earlier, the city has, is working on approving two projects. I'm super excited about that. They have a third one that they're working on. So I think the city is working towards solutions there. As far as Broadway goes, I know how incredibly frustrating that is to that part of town. I think they've been hit harder than any other part of town. And repeatedly with COVID, the state has said, we can't do anything. As Michael mentioned, we have the Ninth Circuit Court who are telling us what we can and can't do. And so you have these outside agencies telling us what we can and can't do without giving us the resources to do it. So it is very frustrating. I really feel for those people. And so I'm looking forward to getting through COVID. That will help us start, we were starting to get a handle on things before COVID, where we had the hot team going to everyone, connecting people with services who wanted help. We had three specific areas in Placerville where people were allowed to be. They were allowed to camp, but there were rules for that too. And that has gone out the door. And I know that's what the public is really frustrated with. I'm frustrated with it as well. So as far as solutions, you know, when you look to other community, it's really the churches and the nonprofits who've been having the highest success. And we need to look at those models and model those here in town. I see my time is up, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. The next question will start with Michael. Michael, let's talk about traffic and the streets. What kind of solutions do you have for the traffic on Highway 50? And can you also talk about how to expedite the repairs of the city streets and make it easier for the residents to find out, for example, when their roads will be repaved?
Absolutely. So we have started a few things that we're doing as a city. We sort of have short-term, middle-term, and long-term plans of how we deal with the traffic. The major traffic is obviously through Highway 50 that bisects Placerville. And that's the long-term goal. That's also a $350 million goal that the EDCTC is currently circulating, sort of the four different options that we have. But it is a lot of money. It's going to be something that's shared regionally. It isn't just the city of Placerville residents that drive through Highway 50. So it's going to be a shared cost. And that's going to be ultimately how we, I think, pay for that project. In terms of midterm, we're looking at the tripping all the lights through Placerville Green to flush the traffic on the weekends through the city and to see how that works. So we're going to be doing that next year. We were trying to do it this year, but COVID delayed some of the Caltrans funding, so we had to push it into 2021. And then, short-term, we're putting up signs along Highway 50 to discourage people from using our side streets for, for trying to get around through Waze or Google Maps. We made Coleman Street one-way on the weekends so that that would also discourage people and force them back onto either Main Street or back onto Highway 50. So that's how we're addressing the long-term goals. And we can always send people to our website. Our projects are on the website. People can see what the next projects are coming up, like Spring and Mosquito Road. Thank you.
Thank you. The next candidate to answer will be Jackie Yapez.
Hi, as far as the roads, I think the roads are in need of many repairs. And I agree with Saragosa on expediting the repairs and getting that done. However, on my street this morning, they showed up to do repairs, which is great. But we got no notification. No one on my street got notifications. So I think that the city needs to do a better job of notifying residents when the street is going to be repaired so we can get in and out with our vehicles. As far as the traffic, I've been studying the alternatives from the El Dorado County Transportation Commission. I had a great conversation with Woody over there. I think we need a long-term traffic solution that will generate revenue for Placerville. So after reviewing all the four alternatives being proposed by the El Dorado County Transportation Commission and speaking to Woody Deloria from that organization about the four proposed alternatives, it seems like the possibility of alternative two with an elevated toll lane would be a good solution to the traffic, a long-term goal, while generating the needed revenue in toll for the city of Placerville. It's estimated, according to the EDCTC, that the toll road could potentially generate an estimated toll of $1 to $2 million annually, which would go to the city of Placerville and Caltrans. So that would be money that would come into our city, much-needed money, while resolving that issue for the long term. If the voters or people do not agree with the toll road, then I believe number three line alternative going west is a short-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Tracy, your turn to answer the question about how to deal with the traffic on Highway 50 and the repaving of streets.
Right. You know, I must say, you know, we got to bring a little personality to the city council. We got to get people interested. It's always going to be the people. This is a people-city volunteering. So we're going to look at communication and coordination. Make it that simple. You know, when you get the public involved in what's going on, there's nothing more frustrating than living in this city. And then Apple Hill opened up where people headed up to Salt Lake Tahoe for the summer and trying to move around to the city and just get the simple foods and things like that. And so when you look at it, you ask people in the different neighborhoods to communicate and conversate. Great ideas with the green light, but we got to go through the green light, you know what I mean? Because traffic can get a little crazy. So the timing of it is everything, you know, kind of letting the public know, maybe from like 7:00 to 10:00 o'clock in the morning, or 10:00 to 2:00, that we're going to have the lights on green and things like this and that. Making sure that people have a chance to voice their opinions because we don't know what's going on in every neighborhood. We can detour cars very easily. We have all kinds of backroads and things. Instead of clogging it up and shutting things down, all we had to do is reach out and communicate. We can do that through the internet. We can do that through the phone. We can do that. Anybody can get notifications, but it takes somebody to lead and bring it up. And one of the things that I bring to the table is that everybody in the city knows that Tracy is always available. And Tracy can always bring the agenda to city council to move forward. So it starts with the people. And so again, we're telling the people what they need to do instead of listening to the people. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Jackie No, your turn to answer the question.
Great, thanks. I think Michael covered pretty thoroughly what's going on with Highway 50 and the traffic and the lights. We actually had this conversation 30 years ago in 1989. And the residents at that time said, no, we don't want to move ahead with any of those options. So we're really revisiting that option to see what the community wants, how they want to deal with it. Is it bad enough to do something? So I look forward to hearing from the community and what they want. That'll be a community discussion. As far as the streets, we have a Measure H and L committee. It has citizens with staff, and they prioritize those streets, prioritizing things. The streets also come with looking at how bad the street is. You know, can we save that street and save money by doing this street now? You know, is that street just lost? So I know that it's frustrating to people to understand how the order is being chosen. But if you attend those meetings and talk to those people, you'll understand how the prioritizing is happening. And the website actually has a list of all the streets that have been done and all the upcoming ones, the recommendations. And if you have something to say, you really should send your comments to that committee or attend one of those committee meetings because they're willing to listen to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Mandy, your turn to answer the question.
Okay, as far as the traffic goes, I know, just living right off of Main Street, I know if I get out and go onto Broadway, when there's traffic going the opposite direction, I'm in trouble if I don't think about it. So I understand that, and I've adjusted to it. So I plan accordingly. If I want to go somewhere where there's a lot of traffic, I hop on my bike. So that's huge. As far as Highway 50, I think that the lights could be synchronized a little better to kind of keep that traffic flowing. But we have to be considerate of the business owners on Main Street. We don't want to do anything that would take traffic away. On the weekends, you want traffic going through Main Street. So I don't know, a five-to-10-minute delay, if you live in any big city, that's really not a big deal, especially if it's only one or maybe two days a week or during holidays. As far as the road repair, it's definitely an issue. We find a lot of money to do roundabouts and things that the community really isn't interested in. Why don't we take that energy and find grants to fix our roads? So I believe that there is grant money out there. So we should put more energy on fixing what we have instead of adding to things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Our next question will start off with Jackie Yapez. And the question is about wildfires. One resident wrote that a wildfire storm in Placerville is a big concern, but they never hear anything about what the evacuation plan is from local authorities. If you were elected, what would you do about this issue? So Jackie Yapez, you would answer first.
Hi, yes, I've reached out to several different organizations that are in charge of the wildfire issue. And I found out that we do not have a wildfire plan. So as a city council member, I would go after getting a plan developed and put it into action. I talked to a couple firefighters the other day on the street for about 15 minutes. And they talked about, we have an overall plan for El Dorado County and all the different cities. However, in that plan, they left out Placerville. I mean, I didn't see it. And I've spoken with somebody at one of the agencies. I have it in my pile. So anyways, I think with the PGE power outages and the possibility, our city, Placerville, has been compared with Paradise. I think we really need to develop a fire safety plan and educate the public and have forums or town hall meetings to bring us up to speed. In this day and age, in 2020, we should have a fire safety plan to protect our people and our businesses. So that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. The next person to answer this will be Tracy.
All right, thank you. You know, again, communicating with the people. I've heard many ideas over the years. One of the simple things I ever saw is like, you know, when we have fire drills at school. I think practice is everything. Sometimes, you know, you don't need the situation to be in your face. You sometimes need the situation to be a routine. And so getting each neighborhood ready for anything that strikes would be awesome. You know, you have a fire chief in the neighborhood, a volunteer that goes around and give everybody an evacuation plan. And you practice that. You practice it timely. And you practice it in the city or you practice it like as a single neighborhood. But practice make perfect. Safety is first. If I'm elected city council, one thing the people can count on is that it can come to me and we'll get that agenda item pushed and understood and implemented. And so safety is always going to be first, just like with the police departments. All the infrastructures will be taken care of, just like our history. But when it comes down to this fire, I've never witnessed a city so endangered sometime that had the rural area not as cleaned up as it needs to be, but we so unaware. And so that goes back to the leaders, not having a conversation, a town hall meeting, and having a conversation with the public, making sure that everybody's safe and the families are safe. And Tracy Bunch is willing to do that. All right, thank you.
Jackie No, your turn to answer.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, definitely wildfires are a big concern. We have a Placerville Safe Council that's been working on a vegetation ordinance. And we appreciate all the work that they're doing, working towards fire-safe plans. One of the concerns that we have are the absentee landowners who don't live here, who have big plots of land or not taking care of their land. So we're looking at the real problems in the city. In regards to an evacuation plan, yes, I definitely support the city developing one. But, you know, we can also think in the bigger picture. And as we look at projects coming forward, particularly road projects, since we're going to be doing a lot of road projects, you know, where can we make better access in and out of the city to help facilitate those evacuation plans? Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Mandy, would you like to answer next, please?
Yes, I agree with Jackies, both Jackies. We do, we absolutely need an evacuation plan. What happened in Paradise is horrifying. I actually had a neighbor from here that moved there about six months before the fire in Paradise and lost everything. So it really brought it home to me. One of the things with the ordinance that concerns me is I have a lot of senior neighbors that are on, they're on fixed incomes, and they really cannot afford to do, you know, the tree cutting and the things that really need to be done. And so I would like to see us come up with a plan to help those people get their houses fire-safe. So that would be really huge as well. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. So, Michael, you're the last one to answer this question.
Yes, thank you. So we actually work fairly close, Placerville, the city of Placerville, with our police department and with El Dorado County Fire on what we would do in such a case if there was a, if there was a fire. The great thing about Placerville is, yes, there are similarities to Paradise. But unlike Paradise, it really only had one egress and egress, ingress and egress way to get in. We have four. We can go north, south, east, and west in the event of a fire if we had to move quickly. Now, if we were all backed up in traffic on a Saturday or Sunday, you know, that creates another issue for us that we'd have to deal with. And so that's one reason that we have to do, we do have to deal with the traffic along Highway 50 in the event that we did have a fire and we had to evacuate people quickly. We do have a fire-safe council now that started in Placerville. A little bit along what Tracy said as well, is we do need residents and neighbors to get involved. It's a little bit like Neighborhood Watch. And so just like you have captains on, on city corner, on street corners, on, on streets. Uh we need kind of the same thing. So we gotta get more people involved. Uh I know I will commit to work more closely with the fire safe councils so that we have uh better coordination. Actually, I think council member really has done a great job there, but we can do a little bit more as well uh so that we're actually getting the word out. And then uh we also have to be able to enforce, as Jackie said, uh some of our, our absentee landlords to pick up, to clean up their areas. Uh and then if we have to lean their property to clean it, that's something we can look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The next question starts off with Tracy Bunch. And a voter writes in, do you think that the city should remove the noose from the city logo? And the word Hangtown from city property? Why or why not?
Well, you gotta understand like, okay, I'm an African American from Mississippi. So emotions come up all the time when people ask me about the noose. Moving to Placerville, I understand the noose means different things for different people. But it has been a symbol of uh, it killed blacks. Uh that's the bottom line. But at the same time, uh it's just not my city, it's our city. And so like everything that goes around and things like that, that's always a democracy. The people uh make a choice like that, you know? The city council is um a place that you can go and have a conversation with a group of people and make sure we make choices for the public. But sometimes it's left up to the public uh when it's time for change. And so uh me personally, like I say, I'm a traditional when it comes to democracy. So it takes a great conversation, takes an understanding. And so I emotionally, I know how I feel about those things. And that comes up, but at the same time, I understand the legacy of coming out to the West and understanding how justice was fought and understood how cities were built. And so like therefore that, that leads to open conversation all the time. So that's one of the main questions I've been getting the whole time I've been running for city council. What about the noose? So like I said, coming from the South, you gotta understand emotionally, that's what it comes up for me. But at the same time, for me to you, I really understand it takes the city to make a decision about history. And so therefore I'm willing to do that. Uh so it's not my city, it's our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Jackie No, you're next.
Thank you. Definitely, uh this issue is about community identity. And each of us here are supposed to represent the community. So until we have those conversations, it, I'm not going to come uh down on one side or the other because I really want to hear everything that everybody has to say. This is an important issue. And I'm a big proponent of public process and hearing from the public. As I said, I, I helped establish the information in the water bills. I've been, you know, the neighbor, support the neighborhood chat meetings. We need to do a lot of outreach and have a lot of conversations with our public. From what I have heard from the public so far, people definitely want to keep Old Hangtown. I don't see any support for taking Old Hangtown um off of our logo. The noose, I definitely hear a mixed bag um in both sides. And I feel compassion for both, both sides of those that I've heard. And I look forward to continuing those discussions and really digging deeper and having that conversation with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Next answer is Mandy.
Um yes, uh you know, during the gold rush, we were the most diverse and multicultural place in the world. There were people from China, Japan. We had freed slaves that came out here and, and you can see it. And actually, last night, there was a, a discussion on the Placerville History Channel with a historian, an African American historian named Tina Alexander. And she spoke of the history, specifically the black history of this area. And I asked her, you know, about the history and, and what does she think about in general about changing it? And she's like, we need to dig deeper into the history. So you know, when you look at that noose and you look at the gold miner, Panny, that noose back there was his only protection from being murdered, robbed. It was his protection. That was his justice back then. And so when we take this history away, just like the lady Tina Alexander has been, she's, a lot of this history that she's fighting, looking for has been taken away. And when you take people's history away, um there's fourth and fifth generation people here. It's not just their history, it's their heritage. So we have to respect that.
Thank you, Mandy. Michael, your turn to answer.
Thank you. Uh so I don't, uh I don't support taking the name Old Hangtown uh away from the city. I think it's an, it is a, it was for a short time that Placerville was called Hangtown. Uh but it was an important part of our history during the gold rush. Uh as to the noose, uh the city council, uh we had a conversation about, we had several conversations about this. And ultimately, we decided that uh we were going to have a conversation with the community sort of post COVID where we could actually sit down and talk together. You know, there was a lot of heated dialogue on a, on a Zoom meeting where I think people would have uh much better table manners uh if we had done this in person. And so I do want to have those conversations in person uh as we move forward. And just as an interesting side note, I will say that the logo that uh has been so much in the news is actually not our official city seal. Uh our official city seal is actually uh a tree with a miner and a, and a bear, a California bear uh with no noose. So uh it's something that could be used. It, it probably predates the logo that we use today. We have an old hundred year old press that we use when we, when we affix it to proclamation. So uh that's something that I, I would look at as well. But again, we're going to have that conversation with the community first. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And just a reminder um to wait to unmute yourself until you're called upon so that we don't cut each other off. Um and so the final person to answer this question will be Jackie Yapes.
Hi, thank you. So I grew up here and I don't support changing the name Hangtown. I think that's part of our historical past. But I also feel that this issue should be put forth to the voters to decide as far as the noose. I understand that this is a sensitive topic and will need to be dealt with in the next year. I also feel that we need to have some town hall meetings in person or on Zoom videos for the public to voice their opinion. One city council meeting that went for five and a half or six hours is not enough for the people of Placerville to voice their concerns and feelings on this sensitive issue. And I also participated on that call. So I think we need to put it to the voters and see if we can get it resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next question will start off with Jackie No. And while we're talking about history, um someone wrote in to ask about a proposal to make Main Street a historic destination for, as part of the national park system. What is your view on this?
Oh, a national park? That would be a big issue. We actually heard this issue at the Park and Rec Commission and had a discussion, a, they just first starter discussion. And one of the things I had said is I would like to see a letter of intent from the National Park Service to see if they're even interested in this before we put too much time and energy into that. I definitely have read through a lot of comments and heard from a lot of people. And the, some of the biggest concerns are how will that affect our small town? We have this, you know, quaint, small community and how will becoming a national park affect that? You know, people talk about when they go to national parks that the cost of everything goes up. The cost of gas, the cost of just about everything they buy. So there are a lot of concerns um that need to be addressed, but it's just the beginning stages of, of that conversation. I'm not going to say I am for it or against it, but I think we need to answer a lot of questions. And we don't have those answers to make those decisions yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy, can you answer the question?
Um, well, you know, who wouldn't like national parks? Developers, big developers. Those, those are the kind of people who don't like historical or national parks. So um it is, uh aside from that, uh for serious, um it's something that really has to be discussed because there's probably all different kinds of factors involved in a national park versus, you know, a historical district. So it would be a really fun conversation to have to see, you know, what, what it could do for our city. And yeah, prices could go up, but opportunities for small business owners um will also go up. So I, it, it'll be a fun discussion.
Thank you, Mandy. Michael, can you answer?
Yeah, so I, I know as Jack, as Ms. No said, it, this topic came to the Recs and Park Commission. It, it didn't uh actually surface at city council yet, so I, I actually don't have as much information about it. But I do know um a national park would be incredibly an expensive endeavor to undertake unless we had uh third party, uh whether nonprofit or businesses that wanted to invest in such an endeavor to get the process going. I would assume something like this would be at least several million dollars in the making uh so that we would have to figure out a way to, to raise those funds. It's, it's something I'd like to hear more about. Uh as I mentioned earlier, I, I was on the Historic Advisory Commission uh where we proposed a historical district for downtown uh Main Street, uh and I still support that. So I think that's the step that we should be taking uh is to make uh our downtown Main Street a historic district uh and, and then see where we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Yapes, your turn to answer.
Please repeat the question.
The question is, uh there was a recent proposal to make Main Street a historic destination as part of the national park system. What is your view on this?
Okay, well, I worked for the uh in the past for the Department of Parks and Recreation in the state, with the state of California and the budget shops. So I would support this proposal. Um I think it would take a lot of work and we'd have to find the resources and the financial money to make it happen, but I would support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, your turn to answer.
I think what makes a great leader, what I've been learning, police chief, uh captain of the basketball team, whatever, is uh your choice making. Right now, going through what we went through at the city, uh all these topics that we're going through right now. And we're thinking about a national park, which is awesome, but we haven't arrived there yet. And so when we think about, I'm all about conservative spending right now. Went through a COVID-19, people lost their homes, people struggling and people need uh, they're, they're not even getting this information. It's like this information is secretive or something. You have to research it, you have to know a person to know a person. And see, that's the difference. Me knowing the people, they will know this information and we will make these decisions together. And so like I say, right now, I want to uh do a lot of conservative like savings. And the things that we have to maintain, we get there. And so at this time, I would say no, and we would talk about it further down the future. Depending how the people feel. And that's why, like I said, going out to the farmer's market and going to the local stores, going over to Broadway. Sometimes I ask the people, have you ever seen a city councilman? They said, no. Uh I go to the gym to say, have you ever seen a city councilman? And so one thing the city council and people need to do as leaders is that we gotta get back involved with the people. Early, I kicked my cup of water over and I kind of got uh, you know, I misspoke on a lot of things. But I'm here now to make people understand, like I say, we do have each other. I do respect the city council. I think Michael's done a great job, Jackie, you know, I do. But I just understand that we need to make sure that we get closer to our people, that we can hear the answers and the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And I'm looking at the time, we have uh time potentially for maybe two more questions. But we'll try to get through this one and see how we do on the timing. Uh the first person to answer this question will be Mandy. And the question is, do you believe in defunding the police? Yes or no?
No. I guess that's it. No.
Okay, there's your answer. The next person we'd like to answer that is Michael. Can you please answer?
No, uh I, I think um, I'm sure the context of that, but no, I, I don't support defunding the police. Do I think we have them do a lot of things that they're uh, is probably not in their wheelhouse? Yes, uh but until we find a solution to that, uh I, I think they're our first line of defense on a lot of things. And uh I really respect the job that they do here in our town. Uh the great thing about our police department is many of them have uh grown up here and lived here their whole lives. They really know the community, they really care about it. The fact uh when we just uh elevated Chief Ren, uh I mean, he, he's a terrific uh chief. And I, I know he has uh the love for our city and for uh for our, our residents in his heart. And it's just, it's a, it's a different environment. I don't know in other places, but here in Placerville, I know uh we respect our police department and uh they do an incredible amount of work on a limited budget. And so no, I would not defund them. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jackie Yapes, can you please answer?
No, I don't believe in defunding the police department. I think we need them to keep our city in order and in check, so I support them. I also reached out the other day to Chief Joseph Ren and he called me right back to discuss the homeless issue and some other things going on in the city. So um I think if we didn't have our police department, we would have chaos at times in the city government and the city. So I support them. So I think if anything, we probably could use a couple more officers with the police department. So that's my take. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, can you please answer the question?
Our police officers are underpaid. They're undertrained. They are heroes that keep our community safe. The thing that people get confused sometimes is that, you know, like personable, like I said again, you know? Uh our police department is one of the greatest departments, uh law enforcement period from the sheriff to the police. I really appreciate them keeping the neighbors who are safe. You know, uh close to the resource officers, uh they come play basketball with the kids. When the kids hate the police officers, they're taught to hate. And I can bring them together, they play a game, it's handshaking, we stand for the flag, we do all these things. Because I want, one thing I want them to understand is that the police are supposed to be respected at all times. And that brings a very cool understanding. So I feel like sometimes they're underpaid for what they do. We ask them to do a lot of things, uh and then we ask them to get disrespected. Uh and then we don't train them to give the things that they need to go out in the community and do the things that they need to do. So they're underpaid uh for the things that they do. And that's the, that's one of the things that I'm gonna bring to the city council is to make sure that we are supposed to celebrate our police officers. But at the same time, we need to also make sure that we're celebrating our CPS, we need our mental health. They need to have us sometimes to sit down in a training together to understand that we have situations that sometimes we don't have to bring aggression, we don't have to bring guns. I've been in a lot of situations with the police and I have nothing but respect for them. So uh we should never defund somebody uh that puts their life on the line to make sure we can go to sleep at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Jackie No.
No, I do not support defunding the police. We have a wonderful police department. They are our public safety. I was on Main Street a couple of weeks ago and a gentleman was running down the road. He had assaulted five people, he had robbed a store and our police department came down and they safely apprehended him. Of course we want the police. In fact, you know, as resources become available, I definitely, as the other Jackie would, would support expanding resources to the police. They do more than just criminal apprehension. I mean, they deal with the public on a daily basis, everybody who has any kind of problem. And you know, national night out, we've been number one a couple of years in a row because we do have such a great police department that connects with our community on multiple levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. This next question will start off with Michael. And the question is about Placerville. Placerville is the county seat. What do you think the county of El Dorado should be doing as a partner to the city of Placerville? And how would you uh as a city councillor advocate harder for the city?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think there's two things that uh the county and the city should be working better on and uh being better partners. And that, the first one would be on the, on the homeless front. Certainly, the mental health uh part of this uh i- it's contained within the county. The, the city doesn't have mental health facilities, uh drug and rehabilitation, things like that. So we have to get more, I think, from the county when it comes to that. And they're in the same, similar situation as us is, you know, funding is not quite there, but we have to uh work with them to have a little bit better plan in place for that. And the same thing with transportation, uh the tra, the traffic that flows through the middle of Placerville is a regional uh issue. It's not just a city of Placerville issue, it's an El Dorado County issue, it's a state of California issue for people driving to Lake Tahoe and people going over, up and over into Nevada. And so I think on those two issues, uh as being the county seat, uh those are both issues that have to be addressed on a regional level. Uh it's not just a city problem. Uh and so uh we will continue to work with that. And how we do that, I, on the two by two committee with the county uh to work with our supervisors uh in that uh, in that dialogue. And I think they, I think they understand and, and there's a real understanding from the county that Placerville is in a unique position when it comes to some of the homelessness as well as the traffic that comes through. And so I'm hopeful we're on the right path going forward right now. Thank you. And so I'm hopeful we're on the right path going forward right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Yipes, can you answer the question next, please?
Could you please repeat the question again?
Happy to. Placerville is the county seat. What do you think the county of El Dorado should be doing as a partner to the city of Placerville? And how would you, as a city council member, advocate harder for our city?
Okay, thank you. I think that we probably could do a better job of collaborating with the county as far as, I agree with Michael Saragos on the homeless and traffic. But and also another point is developing a fire safety plan and dealing with the PG&E power outages. I felt that the power outages have impacted everyone in our community, in the county, more so though in Placerville. I know my friends in El Dorado Hills, they don't, they're not impacted by it most of the time. So I think to be able to collaborate on these three issues or four issues and move forward and, and work together. But I also would like to see, again, the city extended to the Missouri flat area so that we can take some of that revenue from the county to the city of Placerville. So, and share some of that revenue in that corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, can you answer the question next?
Elizabeth, you're doing a great job. I just want to put it out there that I'm all about communication. And one of the things that, that I've been watching, like I said, talking to everybody and things like that, is Placerville is the hub. And so many people on the outskirts don't feel like they have a voice. This is where they shop, you know, this is where the kids come to school, college. We have a lot of things that are like Garden Valley to all the way out to Coloma, all the way out to Pleasant Valley, Pilot Pond, things like that. People always got to come down here and shop. So I feel like sometimes the communication and participation of events, we can plan better. You know, for example, you know, Apple Hill is a beautiful place. At the same time, they can help small-time businesses, I'm thinking just off the top of the head, as far as just even putting some partials up top in Apple Hill so people could kind of enjoy maybe some of, let's say, for instance, Buttercup Pantry. They can enjoy some of that. And then they might want to come back afterwards and stop in town to spend a little more money because they enjoyed that. The arts and crafts and things like that. I just feel like we have a lot of historical spots and a very good spot, and we don't use those to make sure that the hub is great. The hub should be taken care of at all times, on the outskirts and things like that. And we should be doing the same thing for the outskirts. So conversation and communication is the way for me. And I think all the citizens of the county and also the city should be brought together to have these conversations about where we go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Jackie Ng, you're next.
Yes, definitely, we should be partnering with the county. I mean, we are an island right in the middle of El Dorado County. So all of the problems we have, El Dorado County has, and vice versa. The homeless is definitely an issue we need to work together with. They, they get the funding. I think they need to facilitate the conversations of all of the communities taking on their fair share in a regional approach to the homeless. Definitely power traffic, those are all issues. I agree with Jackie Yipes, we need to look at our boundaries. I actually don't think that Missouri Flat is our best opportunity. I think Smith Flat is our best opportunity. The county doesn't have anything going out on in Smith Flat, and there's a lot of opportunities. So we wouldn't be taking from the county, trying to take from them, but using something they're not really using. And there are a lot of opportunities and good conversations to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Mandy, you're the last one to answer this question.
Um, of course, the homeless issue, that's a huge one. Fire prevention, definitely. Transportation, the power, tourism. There's a lot of tourism going up those directions, and how can we spread it out amongst the other areas that are really unique and interesting? So those are some of the things that I'd like to see. Also, you know, being someone who used to live in Lake Tahoe, being up there, we were kind of detached from the rest of, the rest of El Dorado County. So I'd like to see, you know, some kind of working together in that sense too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I think we have time perhaps for maybe one more question. We'll see how, again, how fast we can get through this one. And this is sort of a combination question. It's actually quite large. A voter sent in a question regarding the historic resources of Placerville. And they had questions very specific to many of the different historical monuments in Placerville. So for example, the historic district, the Druid Monument, the Clay Street Bridge, the Old City Hall, the tribal consultation with the local tribes, and the Native American site on Upper Broadway. So without totally getting into the weeds of each one of those issues, can you talk about your plans specifically about how you can continue to keep Placerville historic and preserve these places while also making them accessible to others? And because we ended on, let's see, Mandy for the last one, and we started with Michael, I think we'll go back to the top here from my first question and start with Tracy on that one. So again, just sort of a general commentary about how to handle all the amazing historic resources in Placerville, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Well, when it comes to history, like I said, I'm a buff when it comes to it because I love it, right? So we could put all that together, and that comes down to the point of, like I said, making sure that we have a way of explaining how we're gonna go about doing these with, like our children. Making more tours, bringing things around where we can kind of dedicate a little more thought and, and get a little more solution on how we take care of these things. Because renovation and beautification is everything for the city. And the more we do that, as we get older and pass on, you know, our kids come up with solutions to make sure that we keep this going as legacy in Placerville. I do it for my children every day. When we go on tours and things like that, I point things out, and some of the things that I miss and I see with the kids because they ask me questions, and they don't have a lot of plaques, and they don't have a lot of explanations. And so that's how we lose our history, by explanation. And so, you know, even with the news, when we talked about that earlier, emotions came up for me. So like I say, if it's explained, then we all come to a certain understanding and things like this and that. So as far as like the bridges and as far as like, you know, Ohangtown Creek and things like that, we have to beautify these things, explain these things, put a plaque, and show people, we glorify them a little bit because we are staying in the, they found gold. So I'm blown away sometimes that I get to live in this city. But the real goal, and I think we all know, is not just the historical site, but it's the people. The stories that you sit down and that you will listen to from the older people, and sometimes even from like, you know, the younger generation are beautiful. So it's all about passing the conversation and making sure that we explain to our youth and we explain, and we let the older people explain, and we keep things beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Jackie Ng, you're next.
Thank you. That was a lot of questions. I support the historic district down Main Street. You know, when we look at things like the Druid Monument, I don't know if anyone has ever seen the episode of The History Hunters. And they came out and they looked at the Druid Monument as they left, the comment they made was, wow, you have to risk your life to go see this. And so I think as we look at like the Clay Street realignment, we have an opportunity to bring that Druid Monument to a place where people can safely walk to it and they can read those plaques and they can actually understand and share our history in a way that it's not being shared right now. I try to look at every project that's going on to see what we can do. For example, we have the mosquito project that's being repaved right now, and they're taking away the crosswalk and they're enhancing another crosswalk. And I called the city staff and I said, you know, there's an old cemetery over there. Could we put a sign to direct people and let them know that it's there? And our city was really open to that, so I'm really pleased with our city that they're receptive to our ideas. I agree with Tracy, and I brought this up in the Park and Rec, is an interpretive sign plan to have all over town, you know, Wells Fargo, the Pony Express, No Shu Thompson. Let's take those photos that we see on Facebook that we all ooh and ah about, and let's put them on a sign and let's tell the story. And I'm sure that we could do that without city funding, by going to nonprofits, by going to Wells Fargo and those people who love that history, and I would love to see that happen. Thank you.
Mandy, you're next.
Um, well, we have an arts council, that's now an arts and cultural counselor, council. And when you kind of read their blueprint, it actually talks about creating a culture here, which is kind of weird because we have a very diverse, multicultural already here in our history. And I believe in digging deeper into that history. So our art and our art and our history kind of go hand in hand. So as far as doing signs and things like that, there's really great, like, new ways of doing it where you could literally just have a barcode where you could just, you know, scan it and then take that information and keep going with it. So I, I'm not really interested in moving statues. I like them to stay where they're at. I think that we can improve those areas and, and fix the historical buildings the way that they were meant, the way that they were originally done. Make them look that way and fix the structure of them without messing with their integrity. So anyway, that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Michael, you're next.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think I've mentioned this a couple of times in other answers, but yeah, definitely support historic district downtown. I think that'll help. I think that brings grant money potentially to help our businesses downtown and building owners to do some really great things to their buildings. You know, the Taylors did a wonderful job on their building at the end of town. And I think, you know, there could be similar buildings like that throughout, throughout our, our core area. And I think the historic district will allow for some tax incentives as well as some grant opportunities to do that. In terms of our buildings, Ketchup and Mustard, and then there's the county-owned buildings that are further down the street, the Annex and the old mail post office. What I want on those, and this is really what I've said from the beginning, is I want someone, I'm agnostic as to who ultimately does anything with those buildings. What I want is someone that has a plan that's going to be able to fund it and be able to caretake those buildings. What I don't want to see is the buildings fall into disrepair in a way where the city can't pay for it. And so we really want to be able to attract, whether it's a nonprofit or a business or whoever it may be, to be able to invest into those buildings. And I think there's a lot of opportunities to do that as we move forward here. So I'm looking forward to doing that, and I love the ideas of the signs and other ways in terms of interpretive ways to be able to highlight our resources around the city. We have a ton. Just like we're the only city in California that owns a mine with the Gold Bug Park. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Jackie Yipes, you're the final answer on this question.
Oh, I support the historic districts and the historical monuments. I think that people and tourism come to our town because of our historical past and our history. And I know as a child, I loved coming into town, especially going into the hardware store and some of our buildings. As far as, I think, creating historical signs and maybe stories that could be put up in town around our historical buildings. And I understand that preserving those buildings costs money. And I think to bring them back to code, we need to have the right people that purchase those buildings and keep them up to standards. And I just thought maybe if we had, we could hire somehow a public relations company to advertise our buildings that really need to be overhauled and brought up to code standards. Maybe by having a public relations company throughout the United States, maybe that would draw some interest or people here that really will preserve some of those buildings. And lastly, I don't believe that the Native American sites should be disturbed as far as historical value in El Dorado County. So, thank you.
Thank you. And my time keeper says I have time to squeak in one more question before closing statement. So thanks for bearing with me. I'm going to sort of combine a couple of questions, but this question came in as partially a statement about it seeming to be time for a new working model based on a partnership between the city council and members of the public with some kind of new cooperative model where it doesn't feel so us and them, and there is improved communication between the public and the city council. So can you please answer that question? And we are going to start first with Jackie Ng. You're still muted? And I'm happy to clarify if you need me to.
Yeah, could you clarify that question?
So this voter wrote in and said that it seems like right now there's a very us against them mentality between the public and the city council. So they're asking, is this, is it time for some type of new cooperative model where there's a different type of communication between the public and the city council?
Oh, interesting. I am a big proponent of trying to get the public to communicate with the city council. As I mentioned before, I implemented the electronic emails, the water bills. So any way that we can outreach to the public and bring them in, that's definitely something I support. We have the town hall meetings. I think everyone's a little bit frustrated with COVID. These Zoom meetings are very impersonal compared to in-person meetings, and I think that that's frustrating for everyone. We haven't been able to have any town hall meetings, and we certainly need to have those with some of the hot topics coming up. I, I think the city, I actually think we've made a lot of progress in terms of the city and the public. I understand that some people don't agree with the city, you know, those, those issues aren't all of the people. What you have are citizens disagreeing with each other, and that's where we really need to have more conversations to get to good resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Mandy?
Um, we have to remember that the city works for us, our government works for us. And sometimes we, we, we forget and we think that there are superiors, they should be answering to us. So as a city council member, what I would do is I would do bi-weekly or monthly coffee chats where I would just meet downtown at a coffee shop or wherever and just meet with the community at farmer's markets or wherever and just really get a feel, I'm approachable, I'm available. And I think that that is something that our city council and other government agencies need to have is somebody that you could call up and be like, hey, Mandy, I'm having an issue with this. And not be made to feel stupid or cut off or, you know, just kind of just feeling kind of disrespected. So I, that's definitely an issue, and I see a huge need for it and, and a change in guard, as you would say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Michael?
Yeah, thank you. I think that question was a little loaded in the sense that it presumed that there was a problem between the public and the city council, but I'll go ahead and answer that. I do think, I mean, you can always do better. There's, I don't think, I would be the first to say that we can always do better in having improved communications with the public. I do think that during COVID, it's been a bit challenging. We just had a Zoom meeting or Zoom chat on a traffic commie manual for the city of Placerville, and we had okay participation, but we generally have had better dialogue and better participation when we've been able to do these in person. So we will get back to that, and I'm looking forward to be able to doing that. I have an open door policy. My number's published in the paper, I think, twice a week. My email and my personal cell phone number, so people can call me anytime. Our emails are on the site. I meet with people all the time to talk about their issues, and so we definitely do that. And I think the staff does that as well. But if somebody's not getting a response back from staff, they can always call the city council and ask us to, you know, find out what's going on. And, you know, whether it's more, more Zoom meetings that we can do now, but really, I want to get back to doing things in person because there's not, there's no substitute for that human-to-human interaction. And I think you lose a little bit in this environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jackie Yipes, your turn to answer.
So I think I understood your question to be that to develop a new working model between the public and city council, that what's going on is not working. And I'm sure part of this is due to COVID, but maybe there could be an interim solution. Maybe we could advertise a town hall meeting via Zoom bi-monthly so that the people who want to be heard can be heard and not just be a town hall meeting just for the public. So and advertise that bi-monthly until we can come back to meeting in person, I guess, for our meetings. And I also would have an open door policy. I'm reachable by my cell phone number. I already have an email for city council, and I would be happy to meet with people, whether it's for coffee or tea. It could be social distance with our masks or without them. So I'm available if anyone wants to chat. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person to answer this question will be Tracy.
The last person to answer, wow. Must I say, I'm so proud of each and every one of y'all. I think we bonded forever. Like, I see y'all's signs and the thumbs up, and so it takes a lot of courage to do this. I've been like wide open. Now, I think when I say this, I mean it's Now, I think when I say this, I mean this in the most humblest way. In order to have that, I've been doing this for 15 years. I've been in public, playing ball with all the kids. I've been making sure I referee all the games. I've been in every public arena invited in the most nicest way, the racetracks, things like that where, you know, coming out here 15 years ago, let's be honest, you know, being an African American in Placerville sometimes can be a little overwhelming when you step in a building and you're the only African American. Therefore, like I say, I have courage because I look at everybody as human. I have courage. I have this thing about myself that I sit back and I am very blown away by the talented people that I'm up against running for office, have nothing but respect for all of y'all. But when it comes to being approachable, relatable, I know I'm that person because I've trained and I've groomed myself to put myself in the most hottest situations I possibly can and treat people with nothing but respect. And so the first thing that you want to do to make it more relatable to the people is you want to elect Tracy Bunch. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of you candidates for answering those questions submitted by the public. They will be very pleased with that through so many. Now we're going to move on to the closing remarks. You have one minute, each of you. And as promised, we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order by last name. So that means Jackie Yipesz, we are going to start with you. And again, closing remarks cannot refer to other candidates. And you have one minute, so please go ahead.
In closing, I would like to say that I love our historic small town in El Dorado County and also to thank you all for joining and listening this evening. If elected to the city council, I will use my work and educational background to better serve the people and constituents of Placerville. Also, just to ensure our city is safe and clean while preserving its historical value for our city residents. Thank you for your consideration and vote in this election. And I appreciate being here this evening and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, closing remarks.
Thank you. And I want to thank all the all my all the candidates here for your time as well as for the League of Women Voters. I hope that these tonight, people got to know me a little bit better and understand my commitment to the preservation and betterment of Placerville. It's been my distinct honor to serve as mayor this year and and to serve on city council for these last two years. I think my people got for me this evening is that I'm a fiscal conservative. I'm going to make sure that Placerville dollars are not spent frivolously and that we stretch every dollar that we have. And I think we've done a good job of that going so far, but we need to do more going forward. We don't know what the budget's going to be like in four months or 12 months. And so we have to be fiscally conservative as we go forward. Again, thank you this evening and it would be an honor to earn your vote. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mandy?
First of all, I'm very passionate about this town and I'm passionate about the people who live here. And I may have different ideas and and kind of come from a different place, but I'm ready to have tough conversations. I'm not afraid of them. And so that's something that I definitely bring to the table. I have a fresh new perspective where I'm different. I'm different than a lot of the people that normally get on city council. I haven't been in politics. I am a regular person. I work for a living. I work hard for a living and I want to represent the community. I want to do what the community wants. And so I'm approachable, I'm available. And like I said before, if I'm elected, I will hold bimonthly or monthly coffee chats with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Jackie No? You're muted? There you go.
Sorry about that. First, I want to thank the League for hosting this. We really appreciate that. I want to thank all my fellow candidates here, you know, inside and outside. Everyone's run a clean campaign and I want to say I appreciate you all. And two of us will be elected and I hope that that the other three stay involved and we keep our promise to this community because it really feels like we're a great group of people and I'm excited for the community. I've enjoyed learning about government, serving on all the different committees and being involved, things on the things I'm with. I'm really looking forward to taking my public service to the next step and I hope you will consider me as your representative. My email is jackyno1854@gmail.com if you'd like to reach out to me and talk to me about any issues. Thank you very much.
And a final closing statement from Tracy. You're muted, Tracy. Unmute. Start the clock again. Just one moment.
All right. I will be I will be muted. You know, I couldn't wait to run my mouth. I apologize about that, folks. I think I'm the candidate that's going to bring unity. I can guarantee you that because I paid the cost to make sure to come. I come from nothing, like coming from Mississippi, we lived through hospitality. I'm willing to talk and conversate. So bringing unity and understanding to each other in our little small town brings us together, which protects the town, which makes it safer, which brings equality. We know what all that brings. And I feel like I'm the candidate that can reach across the aisle to each person and have that conversation. I facilitate and at the same time, you don't have to call. You know where to find me. I'm like in public all the time. And I'll probably be in public even more being a councilman because that's my responsibility now. And so therefore, I'm coming into the stores. I'm coming to check on you. You don't have to find me. I'm gonna come find you. And that's why you should elect Tracy Bunch for your city council. I got you. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of our candidates for staying in this forum and answering all of the questions that we received. We very much appreciate you taking the time to be civil and to inform the voters in Placerville. Also, as a reminder, you can find out more about these candidates appearing here on tonight's forum at votersedge.org, the nonpartisan voter guide website by the League of Women Voters. Also, thank you especially to all of the volunteers at the League of Women Voters of El Dorado County. This is also our 100th anniversary of the birth of the League of Women Voters. So please do consider joining us and volunteering with us. You can find out more about the League at l w v eldorado.org. Again, thank you and don't forget to vote November 3rd.